Welcome everyone to ISB's Get On Board: Confessions of School Board Members, Perks and Pitfalls. We welcome all of you here today. And let's, I'm gonna toss this over to Luann, who's our moderator for today, to help out with some of our technical instructions for today. Luann?
Hi, everyone. If anyone has problems with audio, you can call the phone number that's going to be listed in the chat feature in just a moment. I'll be putting that in momentarily. In the meantime, we can advance the slide. We want to hear from you. This is designed to be very interactive. We have some great engaged presenters with us today. So please take time to submit your questions into the Q&amp;A feature, and we will be responding to your questions throughout the webinar. And I am Luann Gavist. I'm on the Board Development Team here at ISB, and I am excited to be moderating today's webinar. And I'm gonna turn it over to one of our presenters, my colleague, Bridgette.
Thank you.
Tell us about herself.
Thank you, Luann. Oops, that's too soon. I am Bridget Johnson, and I am Board Development Director here with Luann and Harry Higginthorpe, and work with the rest of the ISB team. And I'm excited to welcome our guest presenters, Joan Corbin. She is also our ISB Board President and a board member with the Pelus Schools, and also India Johnson, a board member with the Waterloo Schools. And Joan, if I may ask you, if you would just give us a little bit of your background?
Sure. I've been on the Pelus School Board since 2004, so kind of long service, and then joined the ISB Board in 2010, and am presently President, as you said. So I've got a few more years left as President-elect.
All right, thank you. And India Johnson, tell us a little bit about yourself. How have you been with the Waterloo School Board?
Sure, yes. I've been on since 2017, so I'm going to my full second year as a school board member at the Waterloo School District.
Great, thank you. Welcome. And we are so grateful to have both of you here with us to join us as our guest panel members, to go through the perks and the pitfalls. And what everybody may be wondering, what should I know before I become a board member? So before we begin, I'd like to take a little poll. And this is where we get some interaction from our guests, or excuse me, from our participants. So if you would please, Luann's gonna launch the poll here in just a moment, if you would let us know if you are a brand-new candidate, a former board member, or a new board member, superintendent, or a school business official, a board secretary, or other. So please just take a moment, let us know who's joining us today.
Most of you should see the poll that's taking place if you're watching live, unless you have some kind of filter on your computer. That does happen sometimes. Otherwise, you should see the poll in front of you, and it looks like almost everyone has voted. I'm gonna give just a couple more seconds. It's like somebody closed the poll, so let's go ahead and share the results.
All right. It looks like we have about 67% that are brand-new candidates. That's wonderful. And we have around 17% that are superintendents, and 17% that are other. Luann, are you ready?
That's a great mix of folks, and it's good to know who's joining us.
Absolutely. Welcome to all of our participants. And like Luann mentioned, at any time throughout the webinar, please feel free to offer up any questions or if you have any comments. This is gonna be a very conversational hour, what we like to call some lunch and learns. So again, let's just go ahead and get started. All right, so our goals for today is to look at and hopefully help you gain some insights and some tips from some newer and veteran board members. We want to take a look at being aware of some of the public misperceptions regarding the role of the school board members. We're also gonna look at the significant differences between the roles of the school board and roles of the superintendent and other administrative staff. We're also gonna look at understanding the time commitments for serving on the school board. You will learn that it's not just attending one board meeting a month, and also looking at becoming familiar with the common framework for excellence in school board governance. So let's just jump right in. What I'd like to do here is start off our conversation today. And Joan, I'm gonna have you start with this one for us, and then I will follow up with India. So often, sometimes, the common misconception is a school board runs the schools. So when we look at that, what does the work of the school board really look like? Joan, could you start us off with that?
Right, sure. So I wouldn't, the term "run the schools" is pretty extreme, and I would say, no, the school boards do not run the school, but we work with administration to administer the school, the district. And the administration generally is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the district, and the school board is responsible for governing policy, for supervising and doing evaluations with our superintendent, and for fiduciary responsibility. The main differences.
Thank you. India?
I agree with Joan. You know, we always get the misconception of that we have the ability to fire somebody, or a teacher. The concern that, you know, we're coming into the school to dictate what's going on in the classroom, and that's not our role at all. As a school board member, you know, we are, our number-one job is to make sure that we are doing policy and making sure that our only employee that we actually run is, will be their superintendent. And so that's our one and only. And so we, we always had that misconception of who does run the school. But absolutely, as Joan said, you know, it's more about policy and making sure they're running the school the best as possible.
All right. Thank you so much for that. Let's see. When we look at different ways that, some other perceptions that the public has, besides just running the school, what other types of common misperceptions did you run into? India, when you first started, you know, looking at becoming a board member, and when you were on the board member, what other additional common misperceptions did you hear?
The hiring and firing was always a big one as far as the misconception. We don't hire, we don't fire teachers or administrators or things of that nature. One that was always funny, because our district does wear uniforms. And so with my children in school, a lot of their friends kept asking, "So your mom could change that rule? Like, can we get rid of school uniforms?" And I'm like, "No, you know, we can't make that happen tomorrow." So, you know, it's always interesting to be in this seat. And, you know, when you have children in the schools, what they think they can do or what your parents can do as far as being on this board. So the perception is very interesting to see it from students in the school. Parents also have a lot of misconceptions about, you know, "I work in a very public place, and so I get a lot of earful from parents about, you know, you need to do this, and you need to do that." And I'm like, "Okay." So they really feel like your finger, you have the pulse of making decisions on the spot, immediately making it happen. And you don't, absolutely not. But you take those notes, and you take them back if you need to, and kind of just be a listening ear.
Okay, thank you. Joan, what other additional misperceptions have you heard and encountered?
Yeah, thank you. I feel generally that I try to give grace to people who have misconceptions, because I do believe that many years passed if someone had a grandfather or a father who had served on the school board. There was a period of time when culturally, really, the responsibility was fiduciary responsibility. And there were lines that were blurred between, you know, governance model. And I do believe that probably in times past, board members did get involved in some of the day-to-day operations of hiring and maybe some micromanaging of the day-to-day operations. So I think it's just important to be clear about that the board sets the vision or the ends, you know, that holds the system accountable to the vision and mission of the school district, and sets the policies by which the district runs. And then the administration is responsible for the means to get to the ends, meaning what kind of curricular advances and what kind of initiatives we're gonna have, and how administrative function is going to work through the governing of the policies and making the vision and mission actionable.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask a follow-up question. I think, India, you brought up a good point that sometimes when the public or parents have, you know, like many of us, you know, we weren't in our roles now, don't really understand the role of the board. To Joan or India, if you're a candidate and somebody comes to you and wants you to, you know, do something, how do you help educate them about the role of the board? What would be an easy way to do that with, you know, simply to let them know that that's not within...
I will say, one advice that I received, I guess, three or four months in my role and not really understanding strongly what we could and could do, you know, I would say, one thing, advice that I did take, it's like, if you have a complaint or concern, at our board, we do have the ability to have open conversation. You know, we take time out for the community to come and talk about your concerns. And, you know, don't be afraid. The superintendent is an option. You know, here is her telephone number. You can give her a call. And so sometimes they want to vent individuals. Sometimes they just want to talk their ideas out to you. And I'm like, I think it can be sometimes a valid issue. It might be some other concerns that other parents or community members may have. Would you be willing to share that? Come to the school board meeting. Sometimes they're very hesitant to do that, but at least it's an option. And some of them not even aware that is an option. Joan?
Those are really good ideas that you brought up, India, and I would echo those. I would also say that I found it very helpful, and we may further discuss this later, but I found it very helpful to say, as a board member, I can only act in a decision-making capacity when I am with the entire board. I can't act as an individual. So I cannot tell you that, you know, we're going this direction or that direction, or answer something very specific to that constituents' issue. And again, to follow up on what you said, to point back to the person closest to the issue that the constituent has, whether that is an administrator or a teacher. And just listen, I try hard to be very empathic and listen with intent to understand and understand that they may not really understand the role of the board, so gently point back to the right path.
Thanks, Joan. That helps, because that was gonna lead into my next question about, how do you go about talking to those individuals with regards to making promises? India, go ahead.
You'll learn early on, you know, make promises. I mean, I think Joan made a good point about, you know, we can't make decisions. You know, it's a board, a collective board, that we, you know, come and have discussion and dialogue about it. So, you know, that's a number-one no-no. Don't make promises you can't keep at all. And, yeah, they don't know.
Thank you, India. Joan, what would you like to speak about that?
Right. I think a natural tendency for people, like, as you're running and campaigning, you may be interviewed by a radio station, or you may be part of a panel discussion. And just a natural question is, what are your goals? A lot of times I was asked when I would run, "What are your goals for the district?" And that was always perplexing to me, because, you know, I really shouldn't have goals that are not in line with or the same as the mission, to supporting the mission and vision of the district. And so, you know, I think a good answer, you don't have to mirror exactly what I say, but a good answer is to support the mission and vision as it exists now and as we amend it as a full board.
Great, thank you. So what I heard you say is that, both of you say, and correct me if I misheard this, but not one particular board member has authority to make a decision for the whole board, correct?
Correct.
All right, all right, thank you. Let's move on, and let's take a look at, what are some of the key responsibilities of the school board? So I'm gonna start with Joan. So Joan, what would you say, like, what are some of the legal areas that the board must be aware of?
Sure. Well, we are mandated by code to evaluate the superintendent once a year. And different boards have different seasons or times of the year that that is done. And usually, in our board, the culture is to do it over a series of meetings. And that, we take that very seriously, because we have one employee, and that is the superintendent. And it's our job and role to go through a very detailed and systematic evaluation with the superintendent providing evidences as to meeting standards. And those are standards that all board members across this state need to answer to. And the superintendents then provide evidences toward that. So that is one key responsibility, and I'll hand this off to India for more responsibilities.
Thanks, Joan.
I will piggyback on what Joan said. You know, our number-one employee would be the superintendent. In addition to that, we also have to implement policy. So, you know, we will get into this later about, you know, we just don't go to one meeting a month, and that's all that we do. But, you know, we go through the policy, making sure they're updated, making sure that our culture, as far as what we do day-to-day, we have additional meetings, talking about finances and talking about facilities and things of that nature. So school board meetings that we have once a month, don't go beyond just that. We are working to implement policy that works in the schools. And I think that's just very key for our districts to know.
Can I just add one more thing to that? The third one, and I think I mentioned earlier, was fiduciary responsibility. It's important for the members to know the health of the, the financial health of the district, and the superintendent generally provides evidences toward that. But it's our responsibility to look through all the financial information that is given on a monthly basis or bimonthly basis. And then I just wanted to add to India's conversation about policies. And it was fresh on my mind, because we just went over the 200 series last night, which is really about us as board members. And there were, you know, here were the dates given of the last time we reviewed them, and I had to fully disclose and say, you know, in this many years, I haven't caught that there are some places that we probably need to clarify, you know, some things, because I've always given the advice or said to boards, "If we have it in policy, then that should be the way that we're functioning. If that's not the way we're functioning and we're not happy with it, then we need to change the policy." So those are really important.
Thank you. Another thing that I'd like to have you guys address is the responsibility of holding meetings in the open. India, would you kick us off with that? How does that work?
That's by law. I mean, that's very key. I find that to be very important. You know, we are wanting to be transparent when it comes to what we say and do for the public to know. And again, I can't stress enough how important having that open dialogue, you know, having that moment where you, as a community, as students, as teachers, as administrators, can come and talk to a school board. You know, someone came last night to our school board meeting, and she wants to start a group for her students, and the students are very hesitant about coming to the school board. And she made a point like, you know, "They also work for you." Not just about the superintendent, but, you know, we're here also for the students. And so I think that's very critical and very key, because, you know, we want to know, we are wanting to be very aware of what we're doing, if actually working, if not working, how's it not working? And having that conversation with our community, with our students, with our administrators. So that open dialogue transparency, very important.
Thank you, India. Joan?
I would just add that we have to keep in mind all forms of communication. So that would be via email and text messages and so forth. And keep in mind that really the only kind of business that we can do in a reply-all or with everyone weighing in would be ministerial decisions, like availability for a board meeting, or a special board meeting, or, I know, sending flowers for someone, you know, those kind of ministerial decisions. Otherwise, it becomes a rolling board meeting. The same with, if I, I've been board president for some time. So if I have a conversation with one board member about a particular topic, and then go to each board member and have that same conversation, that's not transparent. That's not in the light of day, and that's not what we are bound to do with our public. We're bound to have those kinds of conversations and discussions in open meetings.
Can I just, go ahead, India. One point, and this was something that was very new to me. So the fact of being in certain places at the same time, and I know a quorum, was something that was very new to me. So, you know, more than three can't really be in the same place when it comes to school board meeting. And so I thought that was quite interesting, and being out. So when they would ask me, like, "Are you going to this event in the city?" I'm like, "Yeah." So who else is going? I'm like, "Why does it matter?" So I thought that was interesting, as a new board member, that, you know, you can only have so many. You know, if they're gonna attend an event, you know, your representation, things of that nature. Again, a different role as far as, you know, being in the public, how you represent yourself, very important.
And I would just add to that quickly, that an idea I've had from another board member over the years was that they do, that particular board did purpose to attend sporting events and cultural events and the arts together, but they posted it as a meeting so that they were covering all bases, but they wanted to support the events going on in the school. So that's an idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are important.
Before we move on, I just want to share that we had a similar comment from one of our earlier webinars for candidates, of how can candidates learn about the Open Meetings Law, Chapter 21 and 22? If you are elected, ISB has a ton of resources that we can provide to you once you're a board member, including a course on open meetings and lots of information and resources. But as a candidate, you can visit the Iowa Public Information Board website, and I just posted the website into the chat feature. It's a good way to get background information on all the things that we've been talking about now, because this is such an important thing, because there's so many layers to being meeting in the open. And we do have a question.
I'm just gonna ask. Do you have any questions?
We do, and I'm gonna pose it to Joan and India. The participant wants to know, can you talk about how open you are to taking public comments at board meetings? Joan, do you want to start us off?
Sure. I think we are not disparate from other boards and that we have open forum before the meeting starts. Well, not before the meeting starts, as the beginning of the meeting. And the kind of little speech I always give is that our board meetings are basically a meeting in the public, but not of the public. And, but that said, we do invite commentary, but it needs to pertain to an agenda item. If you wish to speak to an agenda item, then we get on your, you know, hand in your name to the board secretary, and we do it in kind of an orderly fashion. And generally, don't limit it, because we don't have that many times that we have a number of participants, but when we do, then we limit it. What do you do, India?
Slightly different. You know, as she said, we do have a open forum at the very beginning of our meeting. We do limit it, as far as, I think it's like two, three minutes. And so we do have our board secretary who kind of raises a flag and say, "You have a one-minute mark, two-minute mark." We at the board typically do not respond. So it's kind of the community speaking to us, but we at the board don't really respond. It's usually maybe the superintendent who may respond at a later date, but we usually just listen to the comments, take notes, and then we might have a conversation after. But we typically do not respond back to the individual who was at the podium.
And I would echo that. That is our practice as well, India. And our decision has been that I will, well, whoever is the board president will receive those comments, and that's really what it is, a reception and a thanking the person for that. But I'm gonna just talk for just one second about the why of that. The other part that I left out, that I do tend to sometimes say, is that when we are deliberating, if I feel that it's a possible situation that someone is, I don't know, passionate about something and that this might happen, I would say, you know, your commentary period is at the beginning, but we don't invite commentary during deliberation. And so I think to speak to what you said is that your practice is not to answer to those. What that sometimes does is that forces you to be in a deliberation setting by going back and forth, and then another board member might weigh in, and then that really isn't the time in the board meeting to deliberate, so.
Also, are your forum practices stated in your policy? So your open forum practice, is that dictated by your board policy?
That I'm not sure about, honestly.
I can answer.
Go ahead.
India, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm gonna answer to that, because that was one of the things in our policy that I discovered. And, you know, kind of, full disclosure, I've gone through that policy before and hadn't noticed that what we have in our policy doesn't really, in my estimation, I brought it up, and that was just on first reading, so we'll see it again at the next meeting. But it doesn't really clarify. It just says something that sounds like the public is allowed to come and weigh in on everything. And so I was, I was bringing up the idea that maybe that's not what we purport to do, so we need to make it more clear about how we go about the open forum. And we still have, still have work to do on that, but it is in there, but it doesn't exactly say what our common practice is, so we've gotta work on it.
Good to know. I'll have a look at that.
Oftentimes, it is stated in board policy, but I think you just provided a great example of how policy can and should be paid attention to and adapted as needed.
Thank you. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about that when we go to the role of the board in governance and management. But I do have one more additional question with regards to the responsibilities of the school board, and that is your time commitment. So as a school board member, how do you prepare yourself for the meetings? What other types of time commitments are there?
I can start off. So I mentioned earlier, you know, we do have the twice-a-month board meetings that we have, but in addition... As a representative of your school or elected official, we also have a lot of smaller meetings that we have that we sit to talk about facilities or finances or things of that nature. So, you know, they kind of plug you in different spots that may, you know, maybe your gifts might be there, or you just might be plugged in, which is fine to you. But just, you know, it's all related. You know, you're all, you take all this information back, and, you know, you're representing the school, you're board as a being elected official. So I would personally say I was a little overwhelmed, like, I don't know anything about finances or, you know, policy changes, you know. But, you know, when you are placed in the role, you know, this is all learning experience, so, you know, take it all in. And I just kind of enjoy the ride. You know, sometimes you don't say anything. You just continue just to read and read and read. But at some point, you will speak up and, you know, put your two cents in and know. And when you do that, you know that you're at the point where you're actually feeling a little bit more comfortable with what you're doing. But I will say, that first year, it's kind of a huge, going up this huge roller coaster, because you're kind of plopped into different spots in these type of meetings. And you're like, "Why am I here? What was I supposed to do? Was I supposed to say anything?" You don't say anything at all. You just sit there. Yeah, go ahead.
Those are some wonderful examples, India. I was thinking, you know, the time at the meeting is just, is one thing, but in order to be engaged and an active participant at the meetings, you do have to spend some time, or I personally have to spend some time digging into some of the agenda issues and helping educate myself as to the background. For instance, had I not taken notes on some policies, I wouldn't have been able to bring up for conversation to the rest of my board things that maybe we might want to consider tweaking, and of course, that has to be a full board decision. Additionally, I was thinking of advocacy, legislative advocacy. We, once a year, have our legislators in to talk to us about pertinent issues. And at that period of time, it would be important for board members to try to do some research and dig into what were some bills that got close to being passed last year? What are the things on the forefront? So definitely, preparation is key, and looking at all the ways that you can become an engaged board member.
All right, thank you. And Luann, do we have any other additional questions?
Not yet.
All right.
But we're hoping people might, I guess they're just absorbing.
Absorbing it all. All right, good. Well, please feel free to submit your questions at any time throughout our webinar. Let's move on, and let's take a look at now the roles of the board with regards to the governance and the management side. So we often say that the governance side here is the role of the board. That's the ends to the means, which is the management side. The management side is the role of the superintendent. And let's just take for a moment here and compare, excuse me, I need to move something out of my way, the governance side versus the, let me say it this way, the role of the school board and then the role of the superintendent. So the role of the school board is obviously looking at the governance and modeling that enables the board to focus on larger issues and then delegate that clarity. Whereas then the management is the best position to establish those means and identify that the board, and how they, that are identified by the board, and then how they may be accomplished. Then with regard to the school board, they are there to help set the... to the school board, they are there to help set the policies and the goals of the entire school district, whereas the superintendent then makes sound decisions to implement those board policies and the goals for the entire school district. And of course, they're working in conjunction with each other and helping support each other in these areas as well. The, then the school board is looking at focusing on the larger issues and delegating, you know, with clear, with clarity to management, whereas the management side is then to direct and lead the work of the school district and the administrative staff. And then the role of the school board again is to provide a general direction of support of the mission, the vision, and the goals. And then with regards to management, they are helping set their personal goals and make those decisions that lead toward the accomplishment of the school district. So you'll see there's quite a difference here, that it is really the governance is looking at more of the setting policies and goals and larger issues and delegating with the clarity to management, than management is there to implement and help make those sound decisions and direct and lead the work of the school district. When we look at then, what are some of those significant differences? How does that look and feel with regards to the board and the superintendent? So why is that important? Why is the importance of understanding the different leadership of the school district? And Joan, I'm gonna start off with you.
Sure. I think you have done a great job of explaining those differences. And, you know, while it may not make a lot of sense right away to a new board member, I'm gonna go ahead and use an example, so that maybe it becomes clearer. I think the idea that the, the, the board sets a direction, and then the, the follow-through for how that's done is that administration work, and a word I kind of use is that's our jurisdiction, this is our jurisdiction. So the example I'm gonna use is that our board recently took off on a, a big goal, a big initiative on social emotional learning. So the board was supportive of that, the administration, you know, board worked together just to, to get that going. So the trickle-down of that and what that looks like is that at all levels out of our district, we're having some training, we're having some professional development in that area to flush out what the big goals, and the, and the writing of the big goals of that initiative are even administrative function, those are not board function. But I, as a board member, have chosen to be, to attend those, not as a member making decisions, but as an ex-officio gathering, you know, thoughts about it, because we are going to come back and write policy for that. And that is the work of the board, because that will live beyond the discussions that happen today. That will, that will assure that that becomes part of the culture and part of the mission and the, the direction that, that we're leading the school to. And so it's kind of working on both sides. We are not responsible for those day-to-day professional development kinds of things, but we are responsible to hold the system accountable to what we say we're going to do.
Thank you. India?
Totally agree. She did, Joan did a great job providing an example. I will say personally, that was one thing trying to differentiate what my role was and what the superintendent, how did I fit in my first year, and still going, again, going in my second year, sometimes it gets so overwhelming. Right now, I know I sit on the board when it comes to reviewing the policy, and it's been very interesting just to kind of go and review and some of these very outdated policies that, you know, kind of, you know, our, our district changes, it looks different. I know recently, there was kind of a back and forth personally with myself about Wednesdays, you know, having Wednesdays as far as activities, and just trying to figure out, you know, does this role or this situation fit our community as of, as of right now? You know, this, a lot of the policy that we have were almost 10 years old, and so, you know, sometimes these things do change, and, and so when we're looking at some of these situations, you kind of have to look at your district as a whole, and maybe the, what the time that it is right now. And so, and in that sense, you know, you have a dialogue, you have a discussion, you bring it to the board, you know, also, you know, and then you share it with your superintendent, in hopes maybe that this would also be a trickle-down effect that, that will be implemented throughout the district. But, you know, sometimes it doesn't always work out that way, you know. But I think it's always a learning process and understanding what your role is, and Joan did a fantastic job of providing a great example.
Thank you. Can either one of you, and I'll start with you, Joan, could you give us some examples of some role clarity, such as, you know, some tasks that are specific for the superintendent that the board wouldn't be involved in, and then vice versa?
The first thing that comes to mind is, who is he responsible for supervising? And that is his administration. And then, then, you know, that sort of chain of command of how that, how that looks and how that works. So whereas, it's okay, I mean, our administrators come to our board meetings, and we have good interfacing sort of conversations about, about things that are happening in our district and board reports, and we are very engaged and ask a lot of questions. But the clearness of that role has to, we can't understate that. We are, we have to assure that in, in our conversations with administrators and in the way that we have those conversations, and in the words that we say, that they understand that we are not their direct line supervisor, and we are just acting as a board, as a unit, and, you know, just asking questions and keeping that conversation going is okay, but we have to be very clear as to who's responsible for the direction given to administration.
Thank you. India?
I would also say that I kind of, we sometimes find ourselves in a, as the middle woman or man when it comes to our community. And so, you know, our superintendent, they have a huge job, you know, they're responsible, the CEO, so many components, a lot of things that be delegated. And so, you know, when there are concerns, issues, praises, you know, sometime we are the ears and eyes of the community. And so to be able to go back and share that information, the good, bad, and ugly, that to our superintendent, I also feel like that is a huge role, you know, as elected official, you know, these are a community elect us to be in this position, and, and to also express those ideas, be able to share those, because again, you know, a CEO can't be everywhere all the time. And so I do feel like, I feel pretty strongly about sometime I would be a school board member, let me just share these ideas back to my, just be aware of this, take note of some of the conversations that's happening in the community, these events are happening, maybe you should be part of it, you know, not to say that she, she or he has to, but again, there's a lot of stuff that's happening. And I will also point out, you know, we also are tempted about the social media part, you know, people say comments and write comments about things that are going on. And so, again, that's just kind of going back and just being sometimes the eyes and ear of the community and going back to share it with the school board, or school superintendent.
Thank you, India. Joan, I'm gonna throw this question out to you first. How is the, or why is the importance of governance leadership there and involved in a big picture to, let's say, the finance or the district budgets and so forth and so on? So why is that so important that we are aware of the governance leadership role in those areas?
In the area of finance?
Finance, and then the district budgets and such.
Well, it, it probably goes without saying that we want our districts to be healthy, and we want to be able to follow the letter of the law, and, and we, we need to know, you know, what silo of money we can, we can purchase things out of. So I think that, you know, fiduciary responsibility is important, and, and so we have to pay attention. We're not responsible for generating the reports and for bringing, you know, the, the superintendent usually does the agenda and says, we need to vote on spending authority for a particular, several things, as we did last night, at last night's meeting. But, you know, we need to make sure that we understand what it is we're voting on and what it is, you know, and so that, I think in that situation, I think it's hugely important to ask good questions. And if you don't understand something that has to do with the complicated nature of school finance, then, you know, that one of the best things you can do is come to convention or pre-convention and take our, our finance workout workshops. And if you're not able to do that, go schedule a meeting with your business manager and/or your superintendent, and make sure you understand how school finance works and ask good questions.
Thank you. And India, I see you shaking your head. You're a newer board member, so how did you learn all of that?
I will say kudos to our district as far as the breakout sessions that we have many times about, especially the finances, that, that can be very overwhelming. You know, biggest, one big thing I know about our community, we are, want to make sure that we are physically responsible for what we're doing with our money. And, you know, people ask questions about, you know, how's this tax money going where, what's being done with it, being building, being built, you know, things of that nature. And so, we do, they, our district does offer just one-on-one, having conversations of what this, this line item means and how this works. And it's still overwhelming all the time, with a lot of huge numbers that, you know, you might have to approve. You know, we get monthly statements as far as, you know, we are approving this finances, finances. However, I think Joan made a very good point, you just need to continue to ask questions. You know, this is, I'm not a person who is a math number, about math or doing numbers, however, it's good just to know and be aware, and you only do that by asking questions, so.
Great, thank you. Do you have any follow-up questions?
We do have some questions regarding policy. We can take those now, or we can move forward and then take them at the end.
Go ahead and take them now.
Okay. So one of the questions that we have is a really good one, and the question is, is policy change reactionary, or are they required? I can answer part of that, and then I'd like you to go ahead and follow up. There are some policies that are mandated. For example, boards must have an equal educational opportunity policy. As part of our service at ISB, we put out a list of those policies for boards to understand which are mandatory. Then we also have the, those that are strongly recommended that are not mandated, and that an example of one of those would be, oh, another mandatory one, of course, would be bullying and harassment. So those are some consistent policies that are required across the state. An example of a strongly recommended one would be educational philosophy of the school district, where the board would discuss that and then put it in policy. If you don't mind, do you mind if I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
So Joan and India, can you give an example of a policy that your board came up with that was important, because it was an important issue for
Speak to that. Probably within the last two years, we started some conversation, just because it came out of reports, I believe, and then just asking questions, and it was, it was regarding the use of donated money for programs, for, yeah, for programs. So in, in this case, it was for sports programs, but it really could be for anything. And, you know, I asked questions and tried to discover, you know, what do we have that, that provides guidance there? Do we have administrative function, or do we have a policy that relates to that? And then, long story shorter, we did end up writing a policy that guided that decision-making, so that we were within, or so that we were able to stay with the law regarding contributions from outside sources that they, that they're distributed equally, or if you receive, I believe it's if you receive a gift from, from an outside donor to, for instance, one side, like the girls, then you have to garner the same monetary gift for the boys' side. I don't remember exactly how it's written, but I can find that out. But that's just an example of somewhat reacting and somewhat just thinking thoughtfully at the board table.
Okay. And did you have any examples of a policy that your board developed?
I feel like one that, that seems very current as far as issues would be the use of our technology policy and the use of how it's being used in the classroom and the bullying component that is also with that, you know, with the changing of times and how our students are using it. It has come to our attention that, you know, a policy has to be in place as far as how students are using educational purposes, how they're using the technology as given to them. And so I feel like there was a policy that was put in place as far as no bullying, and making sure that students sign off on this, a whole agreement, as far as what parents involved too, that we would be, they would be responsible for their use of it. And so I feel like that was one that was, I don't want to say it was reactionary, but it was very timely, you know, to be, be responsible of how they're using the technology and not hurting others or bullying others. So that's one thing that comes to mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A follow-up question is, what materials are there available to help you review policies? Joan, do you want to start?
Sure. Well, ISB is a very good source for helping, and I spoke earlier to the initiative of social emotional learning, and that we are hoping to write policies surrounding that for guidance. And I did reach out to ISB, and Siobhan helped very much with the investigation as to what model policies might be out there. I also went to the National School Boards Convention, and went to a seminar about social emotional learning, and that was a resource to me. And sometimes you have to glean from a lot of different resources to look at, I wonder if other boards have a policy surrounding this, and if they don't, and it's something, you know, you govern your district, and, and districts are unique and have unique needs, and, you know, you have to be responsive to what works for your district, so you garner information from wherever you can get it. ISB is a great source to kind of look into other districts who may have done something similarly.
And you referred to our colleague, Siobhan Schneider, who's our Policy and Legal Services Director. She, Siobhan and her team provide great service to boards in terms of making sure that policies are up to date and, and helpful in reviewing those policies. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have another question, unless you want to move on?
Go ahead, let, take them where we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this question is about superintendent evaluation, and the question is, do either of you use a, does your board teams use a 360-degree evaluation for superintendent evaluation, where people can get feedback beyond the board, but the administration staff?
I will say yes. My superintendent is very good as far as sending out, wanting to send out surveys to the staff administrators, and she's really on the ball as far as making sure that she gets a response back. She finds that's very important. So she wants to really get to know the climate and what people, what the teachers and superintendents feel that are in the district, and honestly, she does it. And so, so what did it mean by the 360?
Well, and I think the question, India, is, so your superintendent, it sounds like she's proactive in terms of getting a lot of input, but this is relating to a specific superintendent evaluation.
Oh, no, then we don't do that one.
Okay, so your superintendent does get good feedback and uses that information to plan.
And that's just part of it.
And grow.
Yes.
But does not use a formal 360-degree evaluation.
No, no.
How about, how about that, Joan?
We do not do that. We do not have that. We do have culture and climate surveys, but not in that capacity, not, not as, not as used for adding to the evidences for the superintendent.
And, and we've done a lot of studying on that issue here at ISB and have put out some guidance. We've studied districts that have used it. And it does come with, it can be good, but it does come with some cautions. And so I think it's more rare that a district would choose to use that. But good question.
Good questions, all right. All right, so let's move along. I know, I don't know about you guys, but I could sit here and talk even further than our one o'clock end time, but I'm gonna keep in time with our, our schedule here, so let's move along. We did touch on this briefly about some of the time commitments for serving on the school board, and I believe it was India mentioning that there were some other committees that you're on. And also, we know that there's time that's needed for setting aside to get yourself ready to go through your board agenda information. Sometimes it's referred to as your board agenda packet. Sometimes that's delivered electronically, sometimes that's delivered Sometimes that's delivered electronically, sometimes that's delivered in an actual envelope to the individuals. It just depends on the district on how that information's going to be delivered to folks. So it does take some time to, you know, prepare for the meetings, be part of the committees and just, just learning, learning together as a group. And so what I'd like to do here next is just open it up to both Joan and India. And India, I'm going to start off with you first. So what kind of tips would you offer to somebody that's brand new, looking to run, to help them avoid any pitfalls?
One that I will say that comes to mind is especially if you have a student in school, that your position, especially the first couple of months when people do, first teachers first realize you are on the school board, don't overreact. I know that I did because I didn't know how to receive some of the comments. And sometime my children didn't know how to receive, like, you know, your mom's on the school where she can do A, B, and C. And it doesn't work that way. So there is a conversation you do have to have with your family, most importantly, but also not to react when people also have this expectation and you didn't, it really kind of took me from left field because I didn't know exactly, you know, what was going to happen when you kind of transform or transition into as a school board member, how your role in community definitely does change in your role as, especially as being a parent with children in the school. So don't overreact or don't feel bombarded that you have to always explain. It is to explain, but sometimes it was, it was very interesting just to say for myself, just being a parent in school and their expectation of what your role is and what you can, again, that communication of letting them know that, and them understanding that, again, my own employee is the CEO, I don't make decisions without the rest of my school board. And so when, once I understood that, it made it much more comfortable, the conversation was much different and just how I reacted was a little bit different once I understood that. So, yeah. That would be my example.
Thank you, India. Joan?
Those are great examples, India. I'm enjoying hearing them. I am just going to speak to kind of my evolution as a board member over the years. And I believe as a new board member, I was always a little perplexed as to how to receive those comments, especially if they were impassioned comments regarding whatever it was that was going on with that constituent and trying to address it. You know, it was a, it was a conundrum for me to figure out, do I report this back every time? Do I say, I heard from so-and-so? Do I let my superintendent know every time a constituent talks to me? What should be my tenor? All those kinds of things. And what I've kind of come up with is that, you know, people are, I think the best of people. And I try to think the best of people and be a gentle human when I receive those comments and know that whatever they're dealing with is real and, and deal with it with compassion in listening. But then assuring that I laid forth a, a, a very kind of firm line or I guess commentary that would still point them back to the right person to, to, to deal with it and make sure that they knew that that probably wasn't, or that wasn't something that we were going to take back and discuss as a full board, that it generally fell under administrative function. But definitely, don't be afraid to be yourself and listen like you would want to be listened to and try to understand the plight and help them kind of process through that. And then, you know, you, it's your discretion as to whether or not you want to further that conversation with the appropriate person. But oftentimes the constituent will figure out how to process that.
All right.
I'll give you a quick, I just want to say, one of my members, school board members did say sometime it's much better or easier to put it back on the other person, just say, and it will follow up and say, and how did that go? Did you follow up with, just to see where, you know, they actually went through with maybe going to the school board or following up with the principal or something like that? So, you know, it's okay to put it back on the other person to make sure that they're doing their job as much as you are. So, yeah.
Okay. And then finally, what are some of the perks about being on the school board? I'm going to start with you, India.
Again, going into my second year, I think it's interesting just people recognize you in the sense of, you know, if you make a comment at school board, an example, I'll give, this past summer I was at a, in the summer in the park and I made a comment being able to praise something that happened at one of the schools, something that we decided to do was eyeglasses. And I thought, you know, I'd say the comment, how I think it's really wonderful that we are able to do this. And I got so much attention and I never read the paper. And I said, I don't even remember, but it was interesting just to know that people still read the paper and that they're actually looking and were responding to what I said. I also love the fact that I can go to all these schools to see a lot of the things that they're doing. They're doing great things at all the schools, period. They're doing some fantastic things and being able to be able to be part of that and be able to share it, you know, when, that's the part I do love, the good, the bad, and ugly. The good part is being able to get a real insight of some of the policies that actually work and they're working at schools and you see the results of it. And I love, that's the part I have enjoyed more so than anything.
Thank you so much, India. And Joan, what are some of the perks about being on the school board?
I, I think generally being part of something that outlives me, being part of supporting public education in a way that will live beyond my existence. And I think about that in terms of policy direction. I think about that in terms of decisions we make in our infrastructure. I remember when we had to have a change order to change to a 50-year roof and that was kind of my example. That's going to outlive me. And that's exciting though, especially when you're able to make great decisions and you're able to support the work of the administration to create strong, a strong public school. And I'd like, I feel that to my bones. I'm, I love that work.
Thank you so much. In lieu of our time here, I'm just going to point out to you that in your handouts, you do have the let's recap and keys to remember. So I'm not going to go with them here. What I'd like to do is just get to our end of our webinar and close out with our important comments with regards to learning together and coming together at our upcoming next webinar. And I'm trying to get to that in just a moment. Also to remember to come together when you're voted in on the new school board, to come to our website, also attend our convention that's coming up on our pre-convention, it's November 20th, where we dive deeper into all these different areas. And then of course, our convention the day of, great opportunities to learn and network and to even go dive, even to learn even further and also to learn with your local board members. With that, and this off to you.
We have the final of our series of Tuesday Talks with ISB. Our next webinar is October 8th. And it'll be focusing on how do boards keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's the focus on student learning and why that's so important.
I'm looking.
I hope to see you there.
Looking forward to that one too. And again, mark your calendars for the November 20th and 21st at the Iowa Events Center in Des Moines. And we will also have a pre-convention workshop called Thriving in Your First 90 Days. We're going to get the new board members all set up and ready to go for the first 90 days and really give them information that is relevant. And we're going to go deeper in a lot of these different contexts and we're looking forward to that.
So please save those dates in your calendar now. And then on Thursday, the 21st, we have a full day of learning, including a track for brand new board members.
Yes, yes. Phew, that was a wonderful, wonderful time.
Please let us know. I do have one member that wanted to express that as a tip that came in. Remember, board members don't need to know everything, that it's, that it's on-the-job learning, there's a lot of time for learning, we're here to support that learning. And while there is a lot of time commitments, it's not a full-time job.
No, that's true.
And with that, I think we'll, please reach out if you have any questions, we're here to support you. But if you go to the next slide, Bridgette. On behalf of ISB, thank you all for taking the time to be with us today. We're here to help and just a phone call away. This webinar is recorded, has been recorded and will be posted on our website within a day. You will receive an email with a link to a survey. Please take time to complete that survey. We do use that information to inform our supports and services. And especially want to thank Joan, India, and Bridgette for sharing your expertise insights today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joan and India. And good luck to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.